Please note that a video and audio recording of the meeting will be available once internet connectivity is reestablished. Ms. Williams, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. Stacy Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Carlos Vargas.
Here.
Ms. Shontae Jones.
Here.
Mr. Paul Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. Rachel Kirkland will not be here this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Vargas, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the just, solid, and just as it is.
All right. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Okay. It's here. No, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. On the superintendent's spotlight.
Good evening, Vice Chair Alexander and members of the board. We have a very full spotlight tonight, and I look forward to sharing some great things with you. First this evening. One second. There we are. Okay. First up this evening, February is School Bus Driver Appreciation Month. We'd like to take a moment to thank all of our bus drivers, our bus attendants, and our crossing guards for their dedication and hard work. We know our drivers wake up very early in the morning, so they do plan to watch the recording of this school board meeting tonight. Our drivers in attendance are the first faces many of our students see in the morning and the last ones they see in the evening. They are truly driving our students to their future. To provide you with a glimpse into our world of transportation, I asked if I could ride along with one of our bus drivers when I heard that she was retiring after 31 years driving a bus here in Manassas Park. Here's a look at that I hope you enjoy. They say the journey of a thousand miles starts with a sixth step. For Manassas Park City Schools Bus Driver Karen Griffith, that first step was on to bus two in the fall of 1991. For 31 years, Karen drove thousands of miles around the streets of Manassas Park, providing our students with a safe and welcoming ride to and from school each day. The conclusion of her journey came on February 16th as she drove her last run before retirement. For Karen, it was important to make sure every student had a great start to their day on her school bus.
And then, you know, you see them get on the bus and you don't want them to have a bad day. You always say good morning, and that makes a world of difference to them. When you speak to them in the morning, and they get on, and one of them will make you laugh, and it changes your whole day. Your whole day.
A respected team player, Karen, left her mark on everyone she worked with over the years, including her Director of Transportation, Patty Hurley.
Well, Karen is just a wonderful employee, team member. She is, she's the poster child of safety. She makes sure that her children are safe at all times. She's aware of her surroundings. She is just always, always goes that extra yard. And in 31 years of driving, you know, she'll be dearly missed, not only because, not only because, not only because what she does and who she does, what she does and how she watches the kids, it's just because of who she is.
As for her last day, she said it was bittersweet, but she's thankful for all of the memories.
It's like no other job. That's what keeps you.
Yeah. I could be here all day. Yeah. All day. 31 years is a long time.
So I can tell you, you know, I obviously can't tell Karen's whole story in two minutes, but that was absolutely one of the highlights of my last few weeks, was hearing about 31 years of a career in Manassas Park and her dedication to our students. So I think that really epitomizes our appreciation for our bus drivers for this month. So if you see them while you're out and about in the schools, make sure to thank them for the service and also our bus attendants and our crossing guards as well. Okay. Next up tonight, last month in January, the Prince William County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, in affiliation with the Delta Research and Educational Foundation, hosted its 32nd Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Youth Oratorical Competition. This year's theme, Beyond Dreams and Mountains: Her Voice, Her Mission, called on students to speak on the vision of unsung heroines of the civil rights movement past and present, their vision and work, and how it aligns with Dr. King's vision. For more than 30 years, the program's youth orators from around the area have moved and inspired audiences with their impactful words and their dynamic delivery. Working together with English teacher Deanna Harris, Manassas Park High School student Haywon Teke took part in the program this year. Haywon and Ms. Harris are joining us tonight, and Haywon would love the opportunity to come up and share her words with you. So I'm going to go ahead and invite her up to the microphone.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Haywon Teke, and this is my speech. What does it mean to dream? What does it mean to go beyond your obstacles, beyond the mountains? For me, I have to first understand my biggest obstacles, because only then could I begin to answer those questions. So take a look. What are they? What are my obstacles? Well, I can tell you what they are not. They are not negative habits or attributes like my inability to drink enough water or my posture, or even procrastination. No, I've come to understand that my obstacles, my biggest obstacles, are visible. It's what people see when I first walk into a room that builds a wall between me and success. It's my color, my background, my dialect. It's my femininity that haunts me. So my name is echoed across the room by a person struggling to read it, and the silence, the confused eyes, and the shift in energy that follow. They manifest themselves in little moments in my day. Snarky comments, suspicious eyes, and the most common phrase, "Oh, wow, she doesn't even look African." So what do I do? What do I do when my obstacles are who I am? Well, I look to people who encounter the same problem. I admit, I conjured up my most childish intuitions and ran straight to my mother. A black mother. My black mother. A black and well-educated mother that somehow commanded every single room she walked into. I was curious, so I asked how. How did she manage in a world that constantly reminds us that not only does being black expose you to prejudice, but being a black woman is just another layer of discrimination? She said, "It's the way that I responded to the understatement of my abilities that showed me how far I could go. My mother told me that it is keeping your composure at work that gets you through the day. But that composure, that pressure to keep my composure, I cannot think of another group bound so tightly to this social misconception." My mother understood that her response weighed heavily, because not many see the struggle, but rather the angry black woman. Now, you may ask, what does she mean by the angry black woman? I mean the stereotype. When a black woman who is suffering from oppression voices her problems, she does not get sympathy or concern. No. She gets characterized to an aggressive, ill-tempered, illogical, and hostile woman who screams into your ears unprovoked. The most disrespected person in America is the black woman. The most unprotected person in America is the black woman. The most neglected person in America is the black woman. Those words were spoken by Malcolm X almost 60 years ago. What does it mean now? To give you an idea, a survey conducted by the Gallup Center of Black Voices in 2020 found that black women are less likely to feel respected, valued, and listened to in the workplace. Within the same year, the Lean &amp; Foundation found that black women who seek promotions are only 58% likely to get it compared to their white male counterparts, and only 64% likely to be hired into such positions. However, black women are more likely to have never interacted with their senior advisors, more likely to face day-to-day discrimination, more likely to have coworkers question their judgment, and more likely to encounter surprised faces when they exhibit skills and abilities in their area of expertise. So I ask, if the black woman is disrespected, unprotected, and neglected, should she not be angry? Apparently not. So my black mother stayed calm and strong and kept on, and many other incredible women did too. From Sojourner Truth, the first known African-American suffragist who started the path to our freedom by traveling across the country to speak our pain. In 1864, Truth visited President Lincoln in the White House and was appointed counselor to the freed people by the National Freedmen's Relief Association, here in Arlington Heights, Virginia. To Coretta Scott King, the first lady of civil rights who marched in Memphis, Tennessee on April 8th, 1968, just six days after the horrific death of her husband. Even though she was in grief, she kept marching, she kept speaking, she kept fighting. From Representative Shirley Chisholm, who became the first black woman elected to the United States Congress representing New York's 12 congressional districts. She then went on to serve seven terms and continued the motto, "Unbought and un-bossed." To Representative Ayanna Presley, the first black woman to represent Massachusetts in Congress. In March 2019, Presley walked alongside black women advocating for human, civil, and racial justice in Boston. In August of 2020, she went alongside black voters in Washington. "Another world is possible," she said, citing the strong black voices that came before us and the fight she will help continue. The persistence and passion of these women is what dreaming is about. To dream is to believe. To dream is to fight. To dream is to be real. Our pain is real, and our fight is real. I refuse to let my blackness become an obstacle, and I refuse to let my femininity become an obstacle. These women dedicated their lives to help make sure it would not be. So my blackness, I cherish. My femininity, I respect. And above all, their fight, I will remember. And I urge everybody here today to stand up for the black women in your lives, from moms, sisters, and aunts to classmates, teachers, and coworkers. You can help by learning our history and protecting us when we face discrimination, so that young black girls like myself can grow up in a world that respects, protects, strengthens, and cherishes us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Harris as well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
It's always great to be able to bring in some of the things that are going on out there in the schools. And speaking of bringing in a little bit more of what's going on out there in the schools, next up, we celebrate you all in the room. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of our school board members and celebrate public education. The theme of this year's celebration, Building the Future of Public Education, reflects the partnership of the Virginia School Boards Association with local school board members as they serve their local divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. Their job is to establish a vision for the education program and ensure that schools are accountable to the community and strongly advocate continuous improvement in student learning. Your job entails an endless string of meetings and school functions to attend and a host of difficult decisions to make. School board members come from all walks of life. They can be farmers, secretaries, doctors, lawyers, homemakers, architects, truck drivers, professors, and business owners, just to name a few. Although they wear many hats in the workday world, school board members put on a collective hat when they get down to business of leading their school divisions. Board members must pull together as a team toward a common goal of helping all students achieve. So I think, you know, there is, you know, one thing about honoring your work tonight, but as I've said before in meetings we've had, one of the best things, one of the best ways to honor you is to really see the impact that you make with students, and that is our ultimate goal. So again, we do get to see a lot of our really impressive students come into this boardroom. Oftentimes, they are some of our older students. So Pre-K put together a little surprise for you.
That's awesome.
I can't take credit for this. Pre-K did this all on their own, but I may have previewed it, and it's super cute. So Pre-K would like to tell you a little bit about why they love being a student in Manassas Park.
What's your favorite thing about school?
Doing the letters.
Doing the letters? That's awesome. Thank you so much. All right, but why do you love coming to school?
To go to the bus.
To go to the bus. What else do you like to do at school?
To do center time.
To do center time? What do you do at center time?
To play with toys.
That sounds super fun. Why do you like coming to school?
Because they have toys.
Because they have toys. What else do you like about school?
Making jellyfish.
Making jellyfish? That was fun, too. Anything else?
I love dancing in the school.
You love dancing in the school. We do dance a lot at school. All right, thank you, buddy. All right, love. What do you like about coming to school?
I like, um, the, the, the sand and the kitchen, and then the blocks that you can, like, like you make the sand. And then the, so you can make the star.
Yeah? That's awesome, buddy. Thank you so much. All right. What do you like about coming to school?
Centers.
Centers? What do you like doing at centers?
Playing with the comedic sand.
Yeah, comedic sand's really cool. Is there anything else you like about school? What else do you like about school?
Playing outside.
Playing outside? What do you do outside?
Playing around the rosy with friends.
Oh, that's fun. That sounds really fun. All right. What do you love about coming to school?
I love everything.
Yeah? What's your favorite thing about school?
I love to remember.
Mm-hmm. What else?
I love to remember everything.
I love that song.
I hadn't heard that one in a while. Okay. So I hope you enjoyed a little peek into our Pre-K program and what they enjoy about school, and many more things from years to come. I look forward to one day they come in here and maybe read their oratorical speech for us. All right. So now I had each school adopt a school board member, and so we have a little token for each person, so I'll just call you. And if you want to come up, maybe we can gather in the middle, and we'll take a picture of you holding your items. So first up, the Pre-K kids. Stacy Fleming. Okay. And then, Manassas Park. Oh, no. Cougar is next. Cougar. Shontae Jones. There you go. Some artwork for you. Okay. Oh, and then, just quickly, since Ms. Kirkland isn't here today, if you look at the screen there, that is her banner back here, done by the special education students at the high school. So we'll present that to her when she's able to join us again. All right. So Manassas Park Elementary School, Carlos Vargas. And finally, Manassas Park Middle School. I think Mr. Alexander made your name in chewing a CrossFit poem. I think these are all things that describe you, I was told. That's up to you. Okay. All right. Ready? One, two, three. I know, raves. Look at the little...
And it gives the kids an understanding that there's a school here, you know?
Well, I hope that, you know, helps you guys to understand the impact that you make on our students and that, you know, they do really appreciate every, all the opportunities that you make for them. So finally tonight, the VSBA Board of Directors has designated the third week of February as VSBA School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, with the goal of building awareness of the role board clerks play in assisting school board members, superintendents, and our local schools. School board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts. A job well done takes a concentrated effort on the part of all of those they serve, the school board members, superintendents, administrators, the staff, the students, and the community. It is especially important this year to take a moment to thank the school board clerks who have remained attentive and ready to help through a barrage of changes. And we want to thank our very own school board clerk, Dana Williams.
Hey, picture, picture. Come on, ladies.
Oh, yeah. Picture with, um, picture. Mr. Alexander. Sorry. I think I told you one picture today. Thank you. Thank you. And that concludes our superintendent's spotlight this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Now, moving on to public hearing on fiscal year '23 Superintendent Proposed Budget. I'm going to turn my microphone on. I'll say that again. All right. Moving on to the public hearing for fiscal year '23 Superintendent Proposed Budget. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow comments directly related to the fiscal year '23 superintendent's proposed budgets. The guidelines are, citizens wishing to speak must sign in. When called to the podium, please provide your name and Manassas Park address, or your staff, job title, and work location. Each person is allotted three minutes, three timed minutes to make comments. Ms. Williams will let you know when you have reached the three minutes. Ms. Williams, do we have anyone signed up for a public comment?
Vice Chair Alexander, I do have an email of comment to read for someone this evening.
Thank you. I believe Dr. Saunders is going to time. Thank you.
My name is Malia Hayes. I'm a 22-year employee of Manassas Park City Schools and the current MPEA rep for Cougar Elementary. I have watched over the last five years as some of the most talented and most brilliant educators have left Manassas Park. We know that the health of our school system and the quality of education for our students is dependent on a balance of new educators and veteran educators. Thank you, Dr. Saunders, for recognizing that our pay structure must be fair, transparent, and competitive. We are utterly astonished that from day one on the job, you made compensation a priority. We asked our members to briefly share what this new pay structure will mean to them and their families. This pay increase could mean not worrying about the price of daycare, which has been steadily increasing in price due to the pandemic and the cost of daycares to run. It would also mean we can move into a single-family home sooner. This pay structure means I will no longer have to say no when my children ask to join a club or activity. I will finally be able to pay off my student loans. I can quit my second job. I often find it difficult to justify staying here when I look at the pay disparity with other neighboring divisions. I do feel a loyalty to Manassas Park, the students and their families, which makes it difficult to leave. So many of us truly go above and beyond for our students, and it would be fitting if we could be compensated the same way other teachers and surrounding divisions are. There were things that I put off or decided against completely because I cannot afford them. The cost of living has increased dramatically while I have worked here, but my income has not. Please consider helping our division to be competitive and a better place to stay for your whole career, not just a few years. I may finally be able to take a much-needed vacation and purchase clothing for work. As a single mother, I will no longer have to use credit cards to fill the gap between paychecks, and for the first time, I may actually be able to save money, save some money, month to month. This new pay scale means I get to stay here where I truly want to be instead of being forced to seek higher pay at a nearby district. We hope to see our retention rate drastically improve, and most importantly, we hope to see our classrooms led by the best of the best and watch our students reach their full potential. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And that's, no more comments? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you, everybody, for your comments. And now on to public comments. Ms. Williams, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No. Vice Chair Alexander.
All right. Then we are moving on to ongoing business, the mitigation update. But Dr. Saunders, please.
So, good evening, Vice Chair, members of the board. So I'm here this evening to share just some information about our mitigation strategies as we continue to navigate the world of what is being called now, I think we're moving into an endemic versus a pandemic. And so I want to share with you some changes that have occurred since our last meeting in January. It has been very busy, and quite a few things have changed in the way that we have been working. I'll first start with, the first thing, Senate Bill 739 was passed, and this law has three provisions for public schools. Schools are required to offer in-person learning for all students. It is a parent's choice to send their child to school in a mask or not, and no child will receive any disciplinary action based on their mask choice. We did begin following this law prior to the March 1st requirement, and our students and our staff have been working through this and are continuing to embrace one another as they typically do and share their appreciation for each other. The second thing on here is we did make some adjustments to our isolation and quarantine guidance based upon the Virginia Department of Health changes that came forward as well. We do know that if a student, a staff member, does test positive for COVID-19, they will isolate at home for 10 days before returning to school. If you are exposed to someone with COVID-19 at school and you are determined to be a close contact, at this time, you will receive an email notification that you were exposed, and you can continue to report to school as normal with no required quarantine period as long as you remain symptom-free. We just continue to ask everyone to be mindful of how they are feeling and how they are... continue to focus on having a health and healthy and safe environment in our schools. I know that as we continue to go through the year, there will continue to be changes and adjustments as we understand how, how these different changes work in our organization, and so we will continue to share any updates with, with the board and with our staff as necessary. But that's the, that's the update for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one.
Yes.
Just on the, from the first slide for the Virginia Department of Health, when it's referencing the email that goes out, it, it's worried that the email's going to go to, it says you will receive an email and tell you, basically, you can go to certain... So I'm assuming that that's referencing, like, the student is getting the email, are the parents getting a copy as well? I just was, want to make sure that my, some kids don't often communicate with their parents as much as we'd like them to.
Yes, the families are going to get the emails as well, and making sure that, you know, everyone has that information. Those are specific to those close contacts as we're able to identify them at the moment. And as you can imagine, as restrictions and mitigation strategies change, the contact tracing becomes a little bit more challenging, and we want to make sure that we're providing everyone with as much information as we can. So that's something that I know Ms. Kirin and I have been talking about and will continue to talk about with our nurses and, and making sure that we are informing as necessary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Is Pre-K still masking?
So, yeah, so Pre-K, we're waiting on further guidance. There was some indication in the email that I sent yesterday around Head Start specifically because Head Start is a federal program and there are requirements around that. So, you know, Ms. Tickle and Ms. Roach have really just kind of told those Pre-K classrooms and teachers just to hold for a minute until we can get some more clarification on the guidance around Pre-K.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I think it's awesome to be back in low.
Let's hope we stay.
Yeah, all right, so, moving on to, thank you, Dr. Saunders.
You are welcome.
Moving on to ongoing biz, or no, new business, fiscal year 23 proposed medical insurance rates. Mr. Lyon.
Well, I'm not sure if it's up here, but I, good evening, Vice Chair Alexander, honorable members of the board. This evening, I have placed hard copies of what I'm presenting this evening on your desks there in front of you. Tonight, I am here to ask you to approve the new medical insurance rates for FY23 next year. These rates for the Anthem Key Advantage Plans remained flat and will continue on at the same rate for the employee, for the school system into next year. The Kaiser rates did increase by eight to, 8.2%, which increased our share by $21 per of those plans. If you look at the rate sheet, you'll see the employee share of the Key Advantage Plans is a reduction from what they had this year. So those, for the employer, employee side of the rates, they will cost less if they had the Key Advantage Plans. The Kaiser will cost the employee more. All in all, on the employer's side, our costs will go up because we still have to pay for 80% of all plans in the local choice contract. So I ask you this evening to approve this for next budget, FY23.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, the way that this is working, so what, what we're saying is, we are paying 80%. One of them stayed flat, the other one went up. So what is the, my assumption then is...
Your microphone.
My apologies. I'm sorry.
I always forget. Is, is that, you know, whoever is with Anthem kind of stays on the same level, and the ones that are going to be affected directly are the folks with the Kaiser Plan? Is that, is that a correct assumption?
Fairly correct. The, the employee share, the employee share of the, of the Key Advantage Plans will cost them less next year.
Okay.
The, the Kaiser Plan will cost more for the employee.
I see, okay.
And for the employer, it'll cost us more.
No, across the board, of course. So, so for the Anthem folks going down, Kaiser folks going up for us, of course, it's going to go up because any, any kind of increase directly affects it. Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. And then one thing I forgot to mention, the retiree, the COBRA rates are...
Right.
So I have a quick question. Are there any benefit changes at all for the plans?
No, the plans stay the same.
So the co-pays are the same, coverage is the same, everything's the same?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, okay, if that's, so we should take a vote. Does this need to be a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so.
There's money involved.
Yeah, can I give a, I guess, motion to...
A move that we adopt to propose fiscal year 23 medical insurance contribution rates for Manassas Park City Schools as written.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Ms. Stacy Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Carlos Vargas?
Yes.
Ms. Shontae Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Alexander?
Yes. Thank you.
You got your money, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. All right, moving on to upcoming meetings. We have a budget work session Monday, March 7th at 6:59 in the school board meeting room. We also have a regular school board meeting Monday, March 21st at 6:59 also in the school board meeting room. Do we have any board member comments?
I, I actually want to, I know that it's been mentioned before, but for somebody to work at the same place for 31 years, that's quite an accomplishment. I think, I see Ms. Griffith all the time, and unfortunately, I did not know her name. But I think, you know, it's, so it's, I just want to say thank you and God bless.
All right, anyone else? We good?
I'd like to kind of tag along, tag on that as well with the bus drivers. They are the first people that see our children in the morning, and they're excited to go to the school. It, sometimes it's hard to get them out the door, but once they're out the door, they have that skip in their, in their step, and they're on their way, they made it, they're successful, they got on that bus, and they're the first people that say good morning to them in the morning, and they're the first people that, when they're going home, they might talk to if they've had a bad day. And, and I know that my children have shared personal stories and have developed personal relationships with their bus drivers, and it means a lot. It's a lot. So thank you very much.
I was just going to echo on, on top of the bus driver, appreciation, thank you for the video. That, that was awesome. It was, honestly, it's sometimes, it's great to see the faces of the group that you're trying to service, so it really helps. And then to Eve, I know she's already gone, but thank you for coming in, delivering such a powerful speech. That's the case, so we'll take a five-minute break, and then we will go into closed meeting on personnel. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.